Regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. And as before, please make sure you've turned off your cell phones in case you were talking in the meantime. Any final action taken tonight on a conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following the meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission decision is filed in the planning office, and that needs to be done by Wednesday, December 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, December 20th at 9:00 AM in this same room. First I ask if there's any objections from the Planning Commissioners to items on the consent agenda. Actually, I'd kind of like to have, hear more about number two, so I'd like to move number two to the regular agenda.
I'm in agreement.
Any other concerns or items you want to have moved? Alright, so we're going to be moving item number two to the regular agenda. At this point, I'm going to read each of the items on the consent agenda, and if so, if some of you in the audience would like to have that item moved to the regular agenda so you have opportunity for testimony, raise your hand, we'll move it to the regular agenda, and we'll have more consideration of that item. So, I've got to find my list. So, on the regular agenda then would, or consent agenda would be the approval of the minutes from October 26th, then item number three, which is a conditional use permit, that's 15-64 to transfer one building eligibility. This is on land that's approximately three miles southwest of Garrettson. Item number four is a conditional use permit 15-65 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area, and this is at 25-465-477th Avenue, approximately five miles southeast of Baltic, and if approved, it would allow 4,158 square feet. Item number five is a conditional use permit 15-67 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building, and this is at 47-969-252nd Street, approximately 2.5 miles west of Garrettson, and this would allow 2,520 square feet of total accessory building. Item number six is a conditional use permit 15-68 to transfer two building eligibilities, and this is at 47-360 Meadowland, Meadowland Street, approximately 4.5 miles south of Baltic, and it would involve transferring one building eligibility. Ma'am, you'd like to have that moved to the regular agenda? Item number seven is a conditional use permit 15-69 to allow light manufacturing and sheet metal shop on a property located at 47-170 Dominic Street, and that's approximately two miles north of Sioux Falls. Item number eight is a conditional use permit 15-70 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building. This is at 45-753-265th Street, approximately seven miles south of Humboldt, and again, it would allow 2,863 square feet of total accessory building. Item number nine is a conditional use permit 15-71 to transfer one building eligibility on property that's located approximately two and a half miles southeast of Baltic. Any, alright, I didn't see any hands in. Alright, item number 10 is a conditional use permit 15-72 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building, on location is 26-447th, on 467th Avenue, it's approximately 1.5 miles west of Sioux Falls. If approved, it would allow 3,204 square feet. Item number 11 is a conditional use permit 15-73 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building, and it is on property located approximately five miles west of Sioux Falls, and if approved, it would allow 4,000 square feet of total accessory area. Alright, if I saw it correctly, Commissioners help me out if I missed, I think we are moving at my request, item number two, which is the agritourism business, and item number six to the regular agenda.
That's the way I saw it.
Okay, which leaves one, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and the consent agenda carries. So if you were any one of those items that we just read, with the exception of item number two and item number six, your item has been approved, you're free to go.
So was that vote six to nothing, or was it seven to nothing?
Six and a half.
Alright, item number two. David, do you want to tell us, give us a staff report?
Mr. Chairman, there could be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the normal process here is we'll have staff give us their report, then we'll call on the petitioner, and then an opportunity for anyone else in the audience to comment on the item, so please go ahead.
David Heinhold, Planning Department. Item number two is an agricultural tourism permit, which we actually wanted to remove from the consent agenda, because the applicant, just to start out with, this is a request for a farm experience operation and to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area since they're under that 40-acre requirement, not able to build an agricultural building and being in that subdivision of more than four tracks. The applicant sent us, sent an email to us and called us last Monday, which I provided you with the email, that they would, they requested that the item be deferred until the next meeting in January, because they're unable to send someone in their place or be at this meeting, be present at the meeting, and the notification has not been completed for this meeting for the neighbors within 500 feet of the property. So, since this is a repeat from last meeting, I'll see if you have any questions, I'll open up to you on the staff report.
I guess I was kind of hoping to learn a little bit more about it. I miss, I apologize, I missed the fact that it's going to be deferred again.
I didn't see that either.
Yeah, so twice now, it's, we're pushing it out?
Correct.
I sure hope we haven't had people come twice, so I might just call on anybody from the audience that want to speak to it, just so we can get them on the record anyhow. Thank you, David. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, well, at least we gave them the shot. At this point, I guess we're being asked to defer it again, or?
I know this is the one thing you wanted to get done before you left.
Yeah, right.
I'd move for deferral.
Second.
Well, we've got a motion to defer, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion to defer carries. I apologize, I missed the fact that there's an email on that. Item number six then is a conditional use permit to transfer one building eligibility, and Kevin, you've got the report?
Item number six is a conditional use permit to transfer two building eligibilities, and these eligibilities are located approximately four and a half miles south of Baltic along, and they're going to be transferred to the address of 47-360 Meadowland Street, and it's near the Big Sioux River. The, the sites that are located are to the west of the current site that they're sending them to, the receiving site, and approximately 10 acres on the west side of the river, and includes an existing farmstead that's located on the flood plain, or outside of the flood plain, I should say, excuse me. The farmstead has one building eligibility on it currently, and then there's a portion of the site that has another building eligibility. So this 10-acre portion would have a total of four building eligibilities at the end of this move. The request is for these transfers as a result of planning the estate of Myrtle Breckie. As part of a conditional use permit, there are criteria to look at, to make sure that, to review before approving a permit. Number one, the effect of the use and enjoyment of the property and the surrounding area, use is permitted already. Their right to farm notice should be required to notify potential buyers of realities of the area, but other than that, there's little to no, or little effect of the surrounding area with this move. Number two, the effect of the normal orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties. The clustering of eligibilities would help preserve farmland into the future development, pressures continue. In addition, the cluster will benefit future agriculture as development will not create situations of discontinuous farmland. Number three, that utilities and access roads, drainage, and other necessity, necessary facilities are provided. No extra facilities will be needed for this location as there's already a dwelling and they can be extended from there. The, right now, it's a dead-end road as the bridge on that, along the river is closed, and this will cause a certain amount more traffic on that road, but from my site visitors, it's a decent road to allow for a little bit more traffic. The off-site parking loading requirements are met, and the, this will be met when single-family residences are occupied and constructed. The measurements are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, vibration, lighting, that none of these will constitute nuisance, and this, the transfer shall not, or will not create any of these nuisances, and that the health, general welfare, and the public comprehensive plan are, are looked for. The proposed conditional use will have little to no effect on health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The plant, placing building eligibilities in this location allows for residential uses to be clustered together and prevents the conversion of productive agricultural land. I'll kind of go through some of it. As you can see in the map, this parcel right here has two eligibilities on it, and they'll be moving one. This parcel right here has one eligibility on it, and they'll be moving that over to here as well. And this is the current farmstead. I believe it is vacant at the moment. When I visited it, it looked that way anyway, but I may be wrong. Some pictures of the farmland. There is other development happening in this area. This is looking at the farmstead, it's kind of on the hill. This is from the west of the farmstead. This is another picture of the house, and up the driveway. And then there's the dead-end bridge at the end of the road. This is where the nearby residence is, and I believe, oh, I didn't get a picture of the other residence. But staff recommends that this conditional use permit request be approval with the following conditions. Number one, a right-to-farm covenant shall be placed in the deed prior to issuance of a building permit for all single-family dwellings. Two, a preliminary subdivision plan is required to be submitted prior to plating. And three, lots must be plotted prior to building permits being issued. And if that, we'll take any questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Looks like that's a gravel road. You also indicate that there'll be a shared driveway there? Is that?
It has the opportunity to have shared driveway, but it would also be contingent on how they plat it. If they wanted to, they could, I suppose, plat a cul-de-sac down that, or have a private road, or they could have a shared access easement, and that's why we would like to have the preliminary plan.
Wait, just for my, just asking, does the township maintain that road, or do they maintain that themselves? You said it's a dead-end.
It is a township road, and there is one other dwelling up the road. Let me see if I can. There's one more dwelling right here along that, that road.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thank you, sir. Is the applicant here? Can you come forward and tell us about your project, please?
I'm all new to this. It has a name, Irene Warner, and I'm her sister, and so I just thought, just to be, you know, but we're all ready to go, so if it's okay with you goes, you guys, so.
Alright. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, when you wanted this one held out, it's because you just wanted to make sure it would go your way, or?
Well, like I said, you know, it has my sister's name on this, you know, and I didn't know if there was any concerns or anything, you know, I thought, well.
I don't have any, but thank you.
Thank you. Alright, is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
My name's Pat Cannon.
Please come forward.
Yeah, we own, and I, I think it's great, I just, but I was just curious, we own a small, five acres right at the bend there.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess it's south, or I'm sorry, it's, it's north of the, and so it's the old Breckie place. I can't see you.
Yeah.
Hi. And, so you're going to move from the Breckie place, you're going to get rid of the eligibilities there and move them across, or? No, you're going to bring them from those larger parcels?
Yeah. Where's that farmland?
Down onto the, to the homeland, or where the house and the barn and all that is. Okay, so the homes will be there, they're not going to be up in the woods that are a little bit north of there? I'm just curious, because I thought that was flood plain, and I, well, you know, there's a, there's a farmstead there now already, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the homes would be close to that?
Yes. They're having it all surveyed and probably eventually, you know, more than just one?
A little neighborhood, just down across, and then as you go on up toward 254th Street.
I'm sorry to really interrupt, but really, what you need to do is address your questions.
Beg your pardon?
We need to get this all on tape.
Yeah.
We'll start over and have you state your name and address, and then, so we get it on the tape, and then what your questions are, and we'll ask the.
Alright. I'm Pat Cannon, and I live in town, 707 Bachelor Lane, but I own the property as I described, and the only reason I came, I got a notice in the mail, it was mailed from Flandre, is that somebody here?
Yes, the applicant would mail them out.
Oh, you did that, okay.
Irene Warner.
Yep, and obviously, none of the other folks care, because they didn't show up.
Yep.
So, I just thought it was a chance to learn. You know, we had our property for 10 years, but it's recreational, it's an old ruined farmstead, a really old one, and we've been just trying to decide how to, how to build, and so we, and we haven't been in a hurry.
And so basically, you were hoping to just learn a little bit more of what they're planning, and do you have any specific concerns that you'd want to have the commission consider, or are you okay with the transfer, or?
No, yeah, I'm okay with it, I mean, obviously, I just found out what's going on, and, and I just, you know, when we look straight east from there, it's basically just a, you know, a little bit above the flood plain, could be as much as 10, 15 feet above the flood plain generally. I have seen water in the trees down there, and so I, I'm just a little bit surprised at first, because I thought, okay, that's not a, where I would have thought, but it sounds like it's south, and. In the area of the farm, and that all seems to make sense.
Right now, it's generally located, and then they're going to have to do plating of the lots before they can build, and so the more specific locations will be defined later.
Yep, so no, I'm, I just.
Yeah, and you're welcome to talk to the applicant later if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Ma'am, did you want to add anything, or? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? Hearing none, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
And a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doug. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. I believe that's the end of our regular agenda.
New business.
New business, yes, sir.
I have a memo here that I wrapped it up this morning, I wanted to go over some, give you an idea of proposed work schedule that our office will be working on.
I just wanted to keep you well informed on what we're doing in our office, and some of the issues that we're going to be working on over the next year, because some of them are going to be directly impacting you. When I look at this, primarily, we're going to be looking at four major projects within our office. We, we're under, the county's under a mandate for the first item, which is that MS4 program. The county must implement an MS4 program by 2017, and we have entered into basically a letter of intent with D E and R and EPA, and if you're not familiar with what an MS4 program is, I wasn't either, so, but I, what it basically is, is point source pollution. If you drive around the city of Sioux Falls, you'll see like little holding ponds at the end of parking lots, where the water all flows into the holding ponds and then is metered out. And it, basically, it's to control sedimentation and any other, any other materials that can be filtered out through like cattails and natural buffering and, and filter strips. So, I have asked David Heinhold to primarily work on that, I'll be working with him, and he's been doing research. The one issue that we have been now facing is that the MS4 Coordinator for the state quit, so they're in the process of hiring someone, and so we are sort of waiting to see who they're going to hire.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Does, when you look at this now, does that point source pollution, does that include like egg runoff?
No, and the other thing, no, it's only commercial, and, and when we get, when we get to that point, I will brief you, but it's a, it's a very limited identified area, just basically around this, it's within the growth area of Sioux Falls, and it only deals with commercial, commercial development and new residential development. So, if there, and it's a very small identified area, it's primarily over by Split Rock Heights in, in that area, sort of east of town, and the Crooks exit, sort of the industrial park there, and a few other places, you know, along North Cliff. There's very few places that it really impacts us, but we do have to enter into a program which would require us to monitor the site plans, to do hydraulic review and engineering, so, which is beyond my capabilities, as I'm not an engineer, so we're going to be looking at maybe working with the county highway department to have someone there help us review these, and when we, when we do have developments occurring in that area. It's primarily going to affect the Crooks exit a lot, so that's.
About the Brower subdivision?
It's not, that's not within their.
Okay.
It's not within that area, so.
Is it kind of related to like the Sioux, close to the Sioux River drainage area?
Well, it, it, it impacts the Big Sioux River, but that's primarily it. What were you going to say, David?
It's not, it doesn't go up to the Crooks, it just goes up to that swamp, that subdivision.
Okay.
Under by 90.
Okay. So, there's an identified area, I thought it went up to Crooks exit, but I guess it doesn't, but it does impact like in Bonnie's area over there, Split Rock Heights, and, and so, that's the first item. The next item is something that I became aware of about two weeks ago. We will be required to do, to do some major revisions to our sign ordinance. There was a recent decision from this summer, and this is something that Kevin found, was that there was a, I don't know if it was a Supreme Court, a Supreme Court decision, Reed versus the City of Gilbert, which determined that signs can no longer be regulated based on message or content. And so, they only can be regulated by, when they promote, when they have some kind of a government interest such as safety or property value. And Sarah Show has been working with Kevin, we've met last week, and, and will be working, we are going to have to revise our sign code. And where this all sort of comes into play is, we, currently, we will, we have exempt political signs, you know, like the little yard signs, when you have an election, you can put them in yards and whatnot. Well, our, our ordinance is not going to be able to be regulated in that manner anymore. We can't say that that's permitted, but a Burger King sign isn't, so there, we're going to have to be doing some kind of revisions, and it, and I'm just letting you know that when you start mucking around, or fiddling around with sign ordinances, you, you just bring them out of the woodwork. I mean, you're going to have the sign companies, you're going to have the businesses, and, and it can be, I'm just letting you know that it, when, when this all sort of hits the press, it is going to be interesting, because you're going to have a lot of sign companies in here saying, well, you know, we should have billboards, we should have whatever. And what was interesting, and when Kevin and I met with Sarah Show last week, was the fact that this is going to have a much greater impact on the state of South Dakota and the city of Sioux Falls than it will on us, because there, the state of South Dakota regulates billboards, and we talked about how that, that's going to potentially change, but Sarah, our state's attorney, wants to get ahead of this so we don't get sued, so, because there's some liability there. So we are working on that. The next thing that I wanted to tell you, the third program that we're going to be working on is, we're going to have two major revisions to our flood ordinance. Next week, we're having another public open house for the Nine Mile Creek Drainage Basin. This primarily affects southwest Sioux Falls, T, but there is, there is one section of land in the county that there's going to be some major changes to our flood ordinance. You may recall, when we've had these big rain events, the seven inches in August, there's that Galloway, and it's past 57th Street, I'm not familiar, there's that Galloway Park, there's those holding ponds, those are flooding, and, and what that has caused is the city to sort of do some re-engineering, and then that sort of triggered a review of those FEMA flood plain maps, and so we are going to have to, we're going to be re-adopting those flood ordinances, or those maps, and then subsequently, as, as Commissioner Barth knows, there's the whole Sioux Falls Levy Project, which is another whole set of maps, basically on the north side of town. And in FEMA's wisdom, we can't do those all as one project, so that we're going to have to re-adopt that set of maps, and then subsequently, we're going to re-adopt those set of maps, which is going to be two sets of adoption processes. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk to you a little bit about was, if we, if we have enough time after all of this, I, I really think that we need to look at how maybe some revisions to our CAFO ordinance in regard to particularly chickens, and how we, how we classify and how we calculate animal units for chickens, because it, right now, our zoning ordinance uses an archaic method, which is not an industry-wide standard or an industry-wide norm. I guess, when we, when the zoning ordinance, when we looked at CAFOs back in 1999, we talked about overflow watering systems, and they don't use that anymore, it's sort of a dry system where it's dried, and if you use that system, I think it changes the number of animal units, because it's, it's a, it's a dry system versus a wet system, and so we need to talk about that. And then the other thing that I think we need to amend our zoning ordinance in, in regard to CAFOs, is allowing the applicant the ability to get a waiver from a municipality, because right now, if you, if you meet that setback, I mean, there is a setback for, for a municipality, and this came up when we were working with a producer up by Colton. He was like a half a mile southwest of Colton, and he wanted to do a little expansion, but he didn't meet the setback, and, and I, in my mind, I thought, well, we can get a waiver for that, and I discussed that with the state's attorney, and they said, no, it's not a, it's not a, it's not an available option to the, to, to them. I think it should be, I think if, if an elected mayor and city council want to formally make an emotion to allow a waiver, it, it should be as good as a property owner, because they're elected to speak for the people. So, I think there's a couple other changes, and, and when we get to that point, I really feel that we're going to need a working committee or a task force, because I want, I want there to be some definite possibilities for the public to come in, make comment, so there's not this feeling that it's something that's being, you know, snuck in. And that's what we sort of learned, Jeff and I attended, or Commissioner Barth and I attended the meeting down in Turner County, I think, three weeks ago, and that was one of the great criticisms we heard at that meeting was, you know, how did you, how did you make these changes and no one was participating and no one knew about it? And so it'll be a lot like we did our Envision 2035, where we have some public participation, and we may even have maybe like a public open house somewhere, so we get some feedback, and then we'll bring it to you as a commission, so, so we can incorporate any changes that we get, any suggestions, and bring it forth. So, is there any other items that, that anyone would like to see added? I mean, if, I, I, this is a, this is sort of an aggressive workload, because, you know, we are also writing staff reports and doing, building permits and doing everything. because, you know, we are also writing staff reports and doing, building permits and doing everything else that comes along. So it's as time presents itself.
Is there one question, Mr. Chairman? Say, Scott, since you happen to bring up the Crooks Renner exit, or the Crooks exit, the person who put in the storage unit on the east side of the Renner exit?
Yeah.
Okay. He obviously doesn't understand what downward directional lighting is.
East side.
And also, he has not paved anything significantly. And I'm looking, if I'm worked, if I'm on the west side of the interstate and I've done all those things, I'm a little upset with what's going on on the east side of the interstate.
Well, I can address the paving, because we have met with him. Kevin and I met with him, what's his name?
Tim T. Hart.
T. Hart. Yeah, we met with Tim T. Hart, and we have entered into a paving agreement, and he's going to be slowly paving that out. So we, we do have a plan to address the paving. And we can, I'll, I can talk to him, or we, we can talk about the lighting.
Notice the lighting coming down the interstate the other night, and I thought, what's that bright light on the east side of the interstate? Well, here, he's got those standard tack on the wall lights that we don't approve. That's not downward directional lighting.
We can look into that.
I don't think this year, but some, someday, and I, kind of to, to tag on to what Mike is saying, is light pollution is something that eventually, I think, needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Sounds like you got your hands full this year.
No, that's, I, I, you know, I definitely take those suggestions, and, you know, it's something that we can look at. And so this is good. I figured, you know, we're sort of wrapping up the year. We're going to be starting the new year, and, and these are items that I, I want to know about so we can address them if, if we get time and can get around to it.
The reason I noticed that, Scott, is Midwest Steel on the north side of Hartford, which is actually in Hartford, lights up the countryside for, I mean, you can see it from my son's house west of Colton, for crying out loud. And Mike, you know, where, what's his name, Grace, right there, half mile south, he doesn't need a yard light. Shoot, it's just terrible. But then that's in the city. You know, when I kind of mentioned that to one of the people on the Hartford council, I says, guys, you can't let somebody flare a light out in the country like that. That's not fair.
Meanwhile, that grain handling facility at Lyons looks like a space launch facility.
Kind of nice, Cape Canaveral, yeah.
Yeah, light, light pollution is definitely a topic that we can put on the, on the, on the list of items to look at. Okay. I also wanted to...
Bill? No, go ahead. Bill? You go.
I was going to go on to a different subject. Did you have another item?
No.
A couple subjects. I... I wanted to, I'll pass this around. This is the annual report for Makita, Lincoln County Economic Development. David and I attended that open house, or their annual meeting was in November. I'll just pass that around. You know, it definitely is just information on, on what's going on in the community, and you may be aware of that. And then the last item is, this is Wayne, Commissioner Steinhauer's last meeting. Welcome to Pierre. I have a little certificate of appreciation for Wayne. For all the many years, here you go, Wayne. I, I went back and looked, you started in 2001, I think.
Is that right? I wasn't sure.
So you missed 15 years, so, but 14, it's admirable.
Congratulations.
Here's the word.
Anything?
No, I'd just say it's been an honor, and I think it's really important stuff, so I've, I've had fun. Thank you.
And we look forward to having someone that understands planning and zoning issues that, you know, we could call on if we need to make changes.
I guess I'd like to ask you a question under old business. What, what excitement has happened during your time on this body? I mean, I, I mean, we've had a few things that were kind of...
CAFOs are always exciting, right?
Not always, but we've had some exciting ones, yeah.
You know, actually, going back to my college days, I helped do, because I went to school kind of to be an urban planner. And there was a gentleman here, it was way before Dave Queal, I forget what his name was, but I was down here, you know, when they were working on the density zoning back those days. And I think it's what makes Minnehaha significantly different than other counties. And the great work that the staff has done is, this county is significantly a step above and ahead, so it's, it's a nice school.
I don't have any other business.
I was still going to say.
Just going to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And you're, you're my representative now, for Humboldt, so I know who to go.
We'll give you direction. We'll give you direction.
I would appreciate any insights from any of you, so I'm a clean slate and learning fast.
Wayne won't be able to reapply for commissioner, and so this is his last meeting. And we have advertised in the, we've sent out press releases. So if you know people that you want to encourage to apply, you know, put the word out there. It's on our website. There's been some news releases, like I said. And then the other thing that I was going to mention is, at our January meeting, we're going to have election of officers. So you may, but be thinking of that, so we'll, we'll need to elect a chairman and vice chairman. So just to give you a thought, so you can be thinking over that.
Is Wayne the only turnover this year?
Yeah, he was, he was the only person that was up.
Seems like there's two.
Never know, I might be gone next year, so. I mean, the, the chairperson is, I mean, the commissioner is assigned by the county chair each, each year.
I think, you know, as, as good as you are at this, because I have you on here, it's good for those county commissioners to rotate in here and see what goes on.
Yeah.
There's enough new people who have no idea what we do, other than what's brought before them at the county commission.
That's right.
I'll buy the first one.
I move a recess until 15 minutes from now at Wiley's.
Second that motion.
Vote with your feet.
Okay.